Good evening, welcome to the Select Board Meeting for the Town of Southwick, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Present, myself, Russell S. Fox, Chairman, Vice Chairman Doug Mogulyn. Jason Perron is planning to join us via Zoom. We also have the Chief Administrative Officer Carl J. Steinhardt on Zoom, and we have our Administrative Assistant Robin Solak here with us. First thing is I'd ask everybody to please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin, and I keep saying this, it's happening way too often, but we lost another town resident who worked on the town complex design and implementation committee of this various, various building that, this building that we're in right now, Town Hall. And so I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for William Kenneth Sanders. Thank you. First thing on the agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity that, for anyone not on the agenda, that would like to make a statement to the Select Board, this is your opportunity. I'm gonna ask people in the room first. Anybody in the room that would like, I'd ask them to please stand and state their name and address. Is there anybody in this room at this time that would like to make a public comment? I see none. We're going to Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a public comment?
Nobody?
Nope.
Okay.
I do see Mr. Perron has joined.
Okay. Has joined the meeting. Can you hear us, Jason?
Can I mute yourself, Jase?
How about now?
Okay, we can hear you. Thank you. All right. The first thing we're doing is with Police Chief and Fire Chief concerning emergency nine-one-one dispatch and transition update. And I have both Chief Landis and Chiefs of Sanwitz joining us here at the table.
Good evening.
Good evening. As you know, some public comments about the transition. I think you sent out another code red to everybody. I think that really kind of explained it. I also had the opportunity to go down and look at the dispatch, or not, excuse me, the entrance to the police department. So I am now familiar with that. But with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you, both of you chiefs, to make comments and like to make.
First, let's address access. We're currently working to work out some of the, some of the anticipated, some of the anticipated. Our lobby has always been secured. Our building, up until a couple of years ago, could have been staffed at any time, but there is still a potential that we would be empty in the building. So we've devised a system where should the public want to visit, we have the intercom system outside. That would allow them access into the building. If no one in the building were to answer that, it then goes directly to the dispatch center. They can answer and grant access to somebody should they need to get into the lobby for a burn permit, drop a sharps container or something like that. We've also secured that lobby, which is the side of the building, where, once you're in the elevator, you only have access to the second floor of the administrative floors, but you'd still need to be granted access from the exterior from the dispatch center in there, and we'd be able to help you that way, okay? Be a telephone, so if they needed to speak directly to the dispatchers once they're in the building, they could just pick that up and that line will get delivered there to, directed to dispatch. That's a work in progress. The rest of it's functioning right now. The phone line is the only thing that's outstanding. So we've got that part.
Just for clarification, we're talking about the fire station right now.
Right now, not, okay, right, exactly. This is for the fire station. So those are things that, you know, have been tested and working quite well. Our phone systems are set up so that we have access to the dispatch center immediately. We were monitoring and working in partnership with the dispatcher, dispatch center months before we launched to make sure that they understood our operation, how we operated from our station, which is different than Westfield. And granted, there were a couple of things, but we have a morning meeting every, every day with the Dispatch Director, Mina Barch, and we've been communicating any of our needs to them, and all of them have been addressed and corrected rather quickly. As far as operationally, we have not had one problem. So things are going very smoothly on our side.
Excellent. Chief Landis to the Police Department.
So you saw the, excuse me, the lobby when you come in, the hurdle unfortunately is just the fact that when somebody comes in, they're pushing the intercom, whereas you had a dispatcher behind the window at one time. Dispatchers never could come out from behind the window. That's just was the nature of the position. So the, when you come through the door, there is an alarm that goes off up in Westfield. The people are monitored at that point. The dispatcher will engage with them even prior to pushing on the intercom. And generally speaking, most of our traffic coming into the lobby is for records. Our record department is open, same hours it always was. Wendy's there on Tuesday evenings, Monday morning, Wednesdays and Thursdays, and it's always been closed on Fridays. If at some point, and we've had some kind of roundabout conversation regarding if we want to extend those hours. At the moment, Wendy's able to handle everything that comes in for all our requests as it is. If it seems at some point that it becomes more, you know, we may have to look at extending those hours. But for all intents and purposes, the radio in and of itself that's working with the guys, Westfield dispatchers, again, like the fire chief said, they did, you know, dispatching Westfield is a little different for them. We had our own ways of doing these as well, so we're just fine tuning that as we, as we proceed. But it seems to be two weeks in going, going very well.
No, I was impressed when I, when I went into the festival, you know. Could you go into a little more detail in case somebody had an emergency at nighttime and how that would work?
So they would come in, and depending on the emergency, if it was just a report, obviously they'd come in and either they would engage with the dispatcher through the intercom system or the, or the dispatcher would be able to pick up right up, right up as they come through the door and speak with them. If they needed a safe space, the dispatch has electronic access to the hallway that's just outside for a safe space for them to get in wait while an officer, if they're on the road, comes in. And they also even actually could get them all the way into the building, but they get into that hallway. And those are the same access that was allowed with our current dispatch. The protocols would be the same. They're just sitting in a different location, but they do the exact same thing.
Okay. Questions?
No, I too had the opportunity to see the intercom system from firsthand and how it works. And it's really no different when you think about it. I mean, when, going back, when we first started talking about regional, this was my biggest concern, was the dark station, right? And whether there's no dispatcher and you have your officers on the road. But I think that this solution is elegant and it, it's functional. And, and when you really boil it down, it's no different than what we had because by protocol and by rule, that dispatcher wasn't coming out into the lobby, never. So having the person remote and being able to access the same effectual buttons that you had before, it, it, it should be a positive experience for someone and, you know, God forbid, they need to, to get to someplace secure, waiting for an officer to arrive. That's great. And then, you know, to add it to the fireside, I think that's a, you know, a net positive. Frankly, there's, there may be someone in the fire station now, as much as there's someone in the PD at night because the, the fire personnel are on site. You know, that staff twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, if they're not out on a call, they would be in the building. So I think that's, that's a net positive for the people of Southwick. And, you know, from what I've seen from the, you know, the demonstration I got, and I'm looking forward to touring the, the dispatch center this week as well, I think it's gonna be, you know, the, the transition was well planned, well executed.
Yeah. It has been a work in progress for, for overall. This was pre-COVID.
Yeah, absolutely.
We've also invited the dispatchers to start to visit our station so that they get a better handle on how we operate, what they, so what they can see in the station. We'll kind of fill in some of the blanks as to what's different for us. We've had a couple of issues where just notifying them that we are back in quarters is a big difference for them. And it's mainly would move towards what they traditionally did with Westfield. So they know that the ambulance isn't on the road, it's actually in headquarters and so on and so forth. So we've made some small changes, nothing that has been, you know, earth shattering, and it's, it's well worked out. And everybody has been extremely patient with the process, very helpful. And that's good. That includes all the people that were involved in the governmental issues with Westfield. It's been a good project. Looking forward to the next level.
Jason, comments, questions?
None. I got to go tour everything with Chief Landis the other day. And Mr. Mogulyn, my biggest concern as well was what happens if someone was having an emergency? The only, one question I did have is Chief Stefano, it's if a nine-one-one call comes in for EMD and it's somebody that's coming to the station, are they gonna be advised to come to you guys though? Would that be something that would be recommend, like, you're gonna be recommending to them come to the fireside or?
So I'm, so the scenario is if somebody is driving and on the phone with nine-one-one and they want to instrument, institute EMD? I think what they would do-
Yes, basically just if someone has, is having, to clarify, if someone's having a medical emergency and they, they're, the closest place is the fire station, are they gonna be advised by our dispatchers to go there? That's just-
No. Stan, if they got, if they had gone to the police lobby first, they'll advise them to stay at the police lobby and dispatch us to that center. Yeah.
Okay, very good.
About in length how every call is toned out, no matter the source, because we did run into a couple of people still using the, the old phone number if you would to call in medical emergencies to the fire station. Well, again, there are circumstances where there's no one there to answer the phone. All these roll over right now. EMD, the first thing would be what's the address of your emergency? It would be right to eleven Depot and respond to the police department, as we do now when we get medicals there. We just turn around and just right around the block and right there. So that's what we would do.
Okay, very good. That's the only question I have.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anything else?
Okay.
Good on the subject. We're making progress.
And I'm gonna ask, are you both staying for?
Yes.
All right, then I'm gonna ask you to step aside because I'd like to introduce a person that the Chief Administrative Officer and I are recommending to the board. Nadine, if you want to come up. Nadine Signani?
Signoni?
Signoni, I, right.
It's okay.
Good evening, Nadine.
Doug Mogulyn?
Hi, very nice to meet you.
Jason?
Jason Perron?
All right. Nadine, we found you to be an excellent candidate. If you want to talk about your background a little bit to Mr. Mogulyn, I know we have in your packet that Mr. Perron got and Mr. Mogulyn got, they got a lot of your background information, if there's anything you want to add?
Well, I think, I think it's all there. I mean, I started my career out of Westfield State College. I thought I might want to go to law school, so I decided I should figure out what lawyers do. And I started working at Dorothy Wallace. Fresh, I had no idea, no idea. I had a very good stint there with some lawyers that trained me well, went to paralegal school, moved to Colorado for twenty-six years. Continued my paralegal, I was a paralegal for most of that time. The last say, seven, eight years, I transitioned more to office management, procurement, HR, things like that. When I moved back, I worked at MGM for a period of time. I worked on the facilities team. So I did have an opportunity to liaise with a bunch of different departments and, you know, kind of prioritize all the conflicting requests for the facilities team. I was recruited by Second Wind Consultants and did office manager, HR manager there. I was laid off during COVID and now I'm at Pioneer Valley Books.
I laugh because, and I apologize for laughing. I had never heard of Pioneer Valley Books until I picked up this resume, and then someone mentioned the place to me today in a meeting.
It's pretty, they're pretty amazing.
A building contractor who actually constructed their facility in our family.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's wonderful, resources for early literacy and I, I don't think I'd be leaving if it weren't for this.
Smogun, any questions or comments?
What are you most looking forward to here?
Um, gosh, most looking forward to, I like, I like a variety of tasks. I like to learn different things. I like to meet different people. When I worked at the court, I had a lot of interaction with the public. I don't have that in my position now, so I miss that. I think I'll have a little bit more of an opportunity to perhaps use my paralegal skills, which I also miss. I'm, I'm just generally looking forward to a wider range of tasks and, and being more involved with the day-to-day operations and, and in the public.
Any apprehensions about coming into this position? Concerns you have?
I don't think I, I don't think I have any concerns in speaking with Carl. He told me that there'll be, you know, sufficient training. So, and I'm not afraid to ask questions. I'm like, hey, I don't get this. Please tell me how to do it right. That's just the way I've always been. So if, if I do find myself, you know, in a situation where I'm unsure, I'm, I'm always very quick to ask questions and, and try to get the answer I need.
Excellent. Mr. Perron? Any questions or comments?
With my voice, it's very difficult.
Liquor, liquor transfer?
Excellent. I'm sorry, Jason, we had an interruption. Could you please state that again?
I'm, you know, it's just difficult for me to speak. I'm, I'm gonna defer to you and Mr. Steinhardt and Mrs., Mrs. or Ms. Signoni, sounds like a very qualified candidate based on everything I've read.
Good, thank you, Jason. All right, now you want to say the yada, 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 sir?
Isn't that your job, sir?
I'm waiting for the yada, yada, yada.
Well.
He loves saying the yada, yada, yada.
What are you looking for, Mr. Chairman?
Well, with the position, of course, the Chief Administrative Officer will sit down and negotiate out an agreement with you. There's also the physical and, and like Mr. Mogulyn likes to refer to all the others, yada, yada, yadas, before you come on board.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it would be a, a motion to make an offer of employment contingent upon the appropriate background checks, query, pre-employment physical and contract terms having been met and signed off.
Okay. Mr. Mogulyn?
So I would make that motion subject to all the yada, yada, yadas.
Thank you. Mr. Perron?
I will second that motion.
Okay, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
All right, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Now, I hate to do it, but we are going to be going into executive session. We will be reconvening, but I'm gonna ask everybody that's not part of the executive session to please leave the room. All right. I wish you could stay and learn, but unfortunately not, yeah.
As we do that, let's make some introductions while you're here. Police Chief Landis, you know, I think I, yeah.
Yeah. Yada, yada, yada.
Yada, yada, and Fire Chief, Finance Committee Chairman Joe Diddy. And you've already met Rob, and you've met Robin. Okay, now we can do that, so.
I'll be in touch with you tomorrow, Nadine.
Okay.
This is this, your background check.
While you're-
Okay, I'm gonna figure this out. Okay, we're going into executive session. Motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General laws, Chapter C thirty A, Section twenty-one, two and three, Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, litigation matters and strategy for collective bargaining, police union coalition, fire, library unit, non-union staff, clerk union, UPS EU, executive session regarding Mass General laws, Chapter C thirty A, Section twenty-one, two and three, Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, and Exception two, move to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining session, non-union personnel to not, to reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to reconvene in open session. Declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and to reconvene in open session. Exception three, move to go in executive session to discuss strategy, respect collective bargaining. Chair move to go into executive session to conduct strategy session, preparation, negotiation of non-union personnel and to reconvene in open session. Move to go in executive session to discuss strategy, respect the litigation, to declare that an opening may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body and to reconvene in open session. Regarding Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, the person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right in connection therewith to award damages. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Okay, okay. At this time, I'm gonna pause the recording and move anyone on Zoom that's not part of the executive session into the waiting room.
Okay.
Aye, aye, aye.
So we're resuming the recording from six fifteen. We're gonna let people back into the room and open the door. So I'm gonna let everybody in. I'm gonna get up and open the door.
I'm gonna get Robin and have her turn that back on so I don't mess it up.
Backup.
Yeah, bar shop.
Bar shop. This, I hear them.
Yes. This recording going and we turned the camera on now, so.
Just. Select Board meeting resumed.
All right, welcome back to the Select Board Meeting for December nineteenth. What we have now is a hearing. I'm gonna read the notice. Town of Southwick Select Board Liquor License, hearing. Liquor License Authority. Notice is hereby given under Chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General laws that P R I M three, S T three K, I mean, A K H O U S three L L C has applied for a transfer of the on-premises all alcohol liquor license at one oh one Point Grove Road, Southwick, Mass, previously owned by Quality Restaurant, Inc. Located on the westward side of Point Grove Road in a two-story frame building, four rooms on first floor, three rooms on second floor, storage room, four entrances and exits, in the kitchen and deck and back, seven thousand eight hundred sixteen square feet. The proposed hearing will accomplish a transfer of said license from Quality Restaurant, Inc. D B A Lake Life one oh one to P R I M three, S T three A K H O U S three L L C. Establish entertainment license, pledge of license to Geno, Inc. in Quality Restaurants, Inc. Establish serving hours from eleven AM to twelve AM, Tuesday through Sunday. The proposed hearing will also accomplish establishing indoor entertainment Tuesday through Sunday between the hours of eleven AM and twelve AM and outdoor entertainment Tuesday through Sunday between the hours eleven AM and ten PM. Time and date of the hearing, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, six fifteen PM in the Select Board's conference room, four fifty-four College Highway, Southwick, Mass. Select Board, Russell S. Fox, Chairman, Doug Mogulyn, Vice Chairman, Jason Perron, Clerk. Need a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Need a second?
Seconded.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogulyn, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
All right. We have the applicant here in the room. If you'd like to come forward and state your name and address, please.
Yes, Deb Davio. And my address is seventy-three Woodridge Road, Marlboro, Mass.
Okay. And I was told we were gonna have an attorney also.
Yes.
Do we have that attorney present?
Yeah, good evening. I'm on Zoom, Alexandra Hogan, representing the applicant, Prime Steakhouse, LLC.
Okay. I'm gonna let you go ahead and kick off exactly what we're trying to accomplish here.
Okay, thank you. And then I'd like to turn it over to Deb to discuss kind of an overview of what the concept of the restaurant will be. As the notice announced, it is for an on-premise all alcohol liquor license at one oh one Point Grove Road, previously owned by Quality Restaurants, D B A Lake, Lake, Lake Life one oh one. It's a two-story building. We're looking for access to serve inside and also outside on the back deck. It's approximately seven thousand eight hundred sixteen square feet. And you adequately addressed the, the hours of operation indoors and outdoors for the entertainment as well. This will be subject to a lease from Geno, Inc. And will also be pledged to, the license would be pledged to Quality Restaurant and Geno, Inc. through a cross collateralization agreement.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. So Prime Steakhouse is a sibling-owned business. My older brother Todd Davio, who's also on the phone, and Richard Davio and myself and his wife Sonia, will be starting a steakhouse. We really believe in this area. We grew up in Western Mass. We feel like we're coming back to our roots. Richard will be general managing the restaurant. And we intend to have an upscale steakhouse with potential music in the summer, but acoustic only. And intend to open for dinner right now with the option to open for lunch as we, as we move forward.
Okay. All right. Then I'm going to ask if you have any questions or comments at this time?
Not yet.
Mr. Perron, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
None at this time.
All right, then I am gonna open it up to anyone that would like to speak in favor of this application. I ask if you're gonna speak to please stand and state your name and address, or if you're on Zoom, just put your hand up. Is there anyone?
Can I?
Yes, sir. If you could please stand and state your name and address.
Richard Davio, fifteen Cottage Street, East Hampton, Mass. I'm gonna be the general manager, so I, I, I would like this to happen too, so. That's what I have to say.
Right, thank you, sir.
Joe Diddy, two five eight Feeding Hills Road, Southwick, Mass. I am not gonna stand. It sounds like it's a decent proposal. It sounds like it's gonna be quiet in the evenings with upscale dining and the acoustic outside. And a lot of times music sounders been a hassle. So it sounds like it's a win-win for the town.
Okay. Anybody else in the room? Anybody on Zoom, if you could please raise your hand if you'd like to make a comment? Do you see anybody?
No.
Yeah, wait a minute.
Yeah, Todd Davio's raising his hand. Todd, you gotta put your, you're muted. You gotta unmute your phone.
Don't get into an accident. Don't get into an accident.
Sorry about that. I just, I just wanted to say that I'm online, so.
Okay, if you could state your name and address, please, Todd.
Dr. Todd Davio, seventy-three, eighty-three sixty, seventy-third Court, Pinellas Park, Florida.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this application? I see none. Was there any written information submitted that needs to be read into the record? Okay. All right, now I'm gonna go back to the board. Comments?
First, can you, can you give me those hours of operations again? Thanks. Where are you guys in your process of, of all of this?
That's a great question. We are in the restaurant now, just doing some renovations, some new kitchen equipment, getting some paint done. And depending on how this goes, we would like to open sometime in February.
Smogun, anything else?
I have a question for the chair. I think we may have to talk to counsel about some other stuff regarding, I don't know how it ties into all this. So I'm certainly not prepared to make a vote on this issue this evening. So I'd be in favor of continuing this to our next meeting. But that's all the questions I have at this time.
Mr. Perron? Any comments or questions?
No comments. I like the, the whole concept of it, but I believe, I think Mr. Mogulyn and I are- in the same realm of what we're thinking about, so I would support his opinion. Position on this.
Sorry, Jason. To be clear, it's nothing to do with the application in front of us. It has to do with previous.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So I mean, certainly we've been a very pro-business board. This is, we love to see these places being used and and operated successfully. Has nothing to do with with this application. I just want to be very clear to anyone who's here and who's listening. Thank you.
I'll also chime in that we are a pro-business board. I think this is a great project. I I I hope everything goes well.
Thank you.
But I am going to support a motion that we continue this hearing.
Understood.
So I need that motion. If there's anyone else in the room? Then I would make that motion to continue this hearing to. I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. That I would make a motion to continue the hearing until. When's our next meeting there?
January third.
January third.
Tuesday. It's a Tuesday.
Right. That Tuesday is okay.
Lisa's going to do that meeting for me. I already asked her.
All right, so January third. So a motion's been made. Jason, could I get a second?
I will second that motion to continue.
We're going to, we're going to do a roll call vote. Okay, time certain will be.
Fifteen again.
Six fifteen, is that good? Does that work? Six fifteen, six.
How about your attorney, six fifteen?
Alex.
On the third?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion made in second. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgli, I.
Jason Peron, I.
All right, we thank you very much. Merry Christmas, happy holidays and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'm hungry, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, gentlemen, for staying. Okay, here we go. Payrolls acknowledged payroll warrant number two, three, one, four dated twelve, six, twenty-two in the amount of three hundred nine thousand six hundred sixty-one and fifty-nine cents acknowledged payables warrant number two, three, one, six B dated twelve, thirteen, twenty-two in the amount of one million three hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents. Need a motion except the minutes dated two, five, twenty-two.
December fifth. Twenty-two, Russ.
What did he said? Twelve, five, twenty-two?
He said two, five.
He said twelve. It's like I we're clerking. I need a second.
I will second the motion.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, I. Sure. Doug Mowgli, I, for the December fifth. All right, okay. All right, we're going over Southwick Fireman's Association Dinner. It's twelve nineteen at five thirty PM. All right, and we've been asked to attempt. All right, next thing approved seven hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents from friends of the Southwick Library to library gift account for supplies and furniture. I need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second? Vote, Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgli, I.
Jason Peron, I.
Okay, Pioneer Valley Planning Fiscal Twenty-One Program Extension to give the chairman the right to sign to increase ability of funds to twelve thirty-one twenty-two. That'd be December thirty-one twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. I read that three times, but I believe that that the there's two extensions.
There's two, right, yeah. I believe the second one is in error. So I know we're going to do two motions, but let's get it square.
I believe the second one should be twelve thirty-one twenty-three.
I was told today it was twenty-two.
Because this, the contract end date is six thirty twenty-three and the program extension would be to twelve thirty-one twenty-two on the second one?
I I'm gonna.
Right here.
No, I got it. I just think it's a typo and it should have been twenty-three.
Mr. Steinhardt? Do you want to comment on that?
My, obviously they've got different things. They've had to move monies around based on hearings you've had with Gabe before, so I think we should vote them as they've presented them on the paper. And then give the chairman any discretion to modify them if they have to be adjusted for the state government agency.
Okay. For Mr. Stein. Okay, and this is a motion on both, correct?
It's an omnibus motion.
Okay, we got a motion. Jason, a second on that?
I will second the motion.
All right, roll call vote. Russ Fox, I. Doug Mowgli, I.
Jason Peron, I.
All right, thank you. Except in execute Massachusetts Department Fire Services in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred sixty dollars. Thank you, chief. All right.
It's a reimbursement grant, so we'll get that process quickly.
Okay, need a motion? So moved. Need a second? I'll roll call vote. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgli, I.
Okay.
I.
Okay, a motion to offer employment to Mike Marifuga as a full-time career firefighter paramedic per condition set by the fire chief. This is a former employee.
Mr. Chairman, this is a former employee who was with us for a significant amount of time left to take another position and is looking to return to the town of Southwick. Normally, we would have the candidate come in front of us. I defer to the Mr. Peron because I don't know if he's had experience with Mr. Marifuga, but I've known him for years. I have no objection to moving this forward tonight.
Jason, any problem?
I I'm going to defer to you, gentlemen, if I trust Mr. Mowgli's judgment. I do not know Marifuga.
Okay, I need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
I will second the motion.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgli, I.
Jason Peron, I.
All right, the next is to appoint James Fernet to the Southwick Police Department Traffic Control Officer. As a traffic control officer, Mr. Fernet was a reserve officer and a dispatcher and he's retired now from dispatching, but I think this would be a great addition to our traffic control. So I'd accept a motion.
I have a question for Mr. Steinhardt.
Mr. Steinhardt, we have a question.
Steinhardt, stop me if this is, if this is not acceptable for open session, but is this in in line with our agreement with the dispatchers? And the the memorandum of understanding we have with the dispatchers and the sun setting of Southwick Dispatch? This doesn't affect Mr. Fernet negatively in that regard?
Mr. Fernet will be retired from this function, so him as a retiree doing this won't be any different than you having used Don Day or Kevin Bishop as retirees from the police department for traffic control.
I understood that, but there was conditions and promises made on behalf of the town of South on their retirement from the town of Southwick, and that would not, this would not be affected by Mr. Fernet taking this position becoming a traffic control officer. I'm doing this in the interest of Mr. Fernet.
Right, those are, well, it's no longer a position that's under the Hampden County Retirement Board.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Fernet subject to the yada yadas as a T C L.
Need a second?
I will second that.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgli, I.
Okay, next thing up is to authorize an interview for Christopher Dufrane as a Southwick Police Department Part-Time Officer.
So moved.
I need a second?
Seconded.
Call vote. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgli, I.
Jason Peron, I.
So I would imagine he will be scheduled for your January third meeting. And he's being supported in this process by Lieutenant Banish.
Good. Okay, I need a motion to approve a hundred and fifty dollar donation from James Wang and Andrea Bugbee in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars for the library gift account.
So moved.
Need a second? All in favor, roll call vote. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgli, I.
Jason Peron, I.
And a thank you to them for that generous donation. I'm going to read off the following. This is a donation of one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars to the Southwick Animal Control Medical. Here we go. Patricia Turner, Granville, Mass, one hundred dollars. Beth Carroll, North Granby, Connecticut, fifty dollars. Dorothy Gerard, Southwick, twenty dollars. Kimberly Hannah, Southwick, fifty dollars. Linda Bodman, Southwick, twenty dollars. Patricia run it, run it, run the debt?
Not, we're not debt.
Run a debt. Melbourne, Florida, forty dollars. Lisa Wilson, Southwick, forty dollars. Ellen Piskowski, Farmington, Connecticut, one hundred dollars. Bacon and Wilson, Springfield, Mass, five dollars. David Plakeas, Westfield, Mass, one thousand dollars. Chabelli Fuel of Southwick, Mass, five hundred dollars. So all grand total of one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars worth of donations. Need a motion?
And to just to note that there's a lot of these checks with a lot of gratitude here for Linda Melick and Karen Reed and others on the notes of the check. So I gladly make that motion to accept these generous donations with our thanks.
Need a second?
That motion.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgli, I.
Jason Peron, I.
Okay, and Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On the library note, there's a forty-four dollar and ninety-nine cent deposit from Optima for items delivered damaged in delivery, which I assume they said to keep it, which makes it a donation. So we need a motion, which I just put forth to accept that forty-five dollars.
Jason, could you second that?
I will second that.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgli, I.
Jason Peron, I.
Okay, we have a request here from the Animal Control Officer to increase the adoption fee to two hundred dollars per animal in the packet that she presented us. She's talking about the average cost to the facility for cats and kittens. It's three hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Puppies, dogs and mature dogs, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ten cents. The current adoption in place is a hundred and forty for cats, a hundred and sixty for dogs. So I think that yeah, different categories in the surrounding area. She gives us examples kittens, two hundred and eighty-three dollars, seventy-five cents, cats, a hundred and ninety-one dollars, puppies, three hundred, dogs, two hundred and seventy-one. So she's requesting that the board approve increasing it to a two hundred dollar adoption fee to help cover some of the costs. Questions or suggestions or a motion?
That's a delicate balance all the time with, you know, you want to have people out pets and then, but the the cost starts to get a little excessive. But the costs are the costs, so I will put forth the motion. She's making a good, a very good balance between balancing the cost to the shelter and the cost to families that are looking to take in an animal like this. So I think it's a excellent move on her part. So moved.
I need a second?
I'll second the motion.
I will just add before I do a roll call vote, we happened to be looking online the other night for adoption of a dog. And the cost was between three hundred and seven hundred dollars, depending on the location of the dog. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgli, I.
Jason Peron, I.
Okay, new business, treasure collector clerk email on elections. I'm looking for it. I don't see it. But what I do see here while we're looking for that is we do have a resignation that's been submitted. One of our cemetery commissioners, Heidi Johnstone is going to be moving out of Southwick, so we will need to post that and see if we can't get someone in here, a joint, be a joint vote of the select board and the two remaining cemetery commissioner. So a motion to post?
Motion to accept the resignation with our regrets and to post.
Okay, I need a second?
Will second that motion.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgli, I.
Okay.
Jason, I.
Carl, you know, new business treasure collector clerk email on elections? Do you have that? Am I missing something?
No, I can't find it in mine either, but that is the process of having the Board of Registraz come in with the town clerk to go over the process of how elections can be done locally, similar to the state level. And there's a series, okay, there's a series of actions that have to be undertaken by the Board of Registraz and by the select board at their levels to make a policy decision on whether or not you're going to do these elections process similar to the ones you've done for state elections and what those costs will end up being too.
Okay, why don't we schedule that not for the June third or January third, but the the following meeting? How's that?
That's fine. Robin and I will put them on for, let's see, that that'll be another meeting. The one after it, okay?
Figure it out. The only other thing I had under new business, I wanted to thank Robin Solak for organizing the festivities we had for staff and boards and commissions last Friday. Also want to thank Lisa and Karen and David and all the, all the people that and their efforts, but thank you very much. Mr. Mowgli, new business?
Just a couple of quick things and some of we covered already. So first is for those attending MMA, make sure we look at those schedule to make sure we pick the right ones that are covered by.
Yeah.
I have an upcoming tour this week of the Regional Dispatch Center with the chief. It's going to be coinciding with a meeting that I think was just put on Zoom, but we're still going to go up there anyway on Thursday. The chiefs and our radio consultant met this past Friday to discuss emergency management, the E O C access to regional dispatch during their monthly test. There was a small glitch and it was resolved with a piece of paper giving Charlie the authority to contact regional dispatch with his existing radio equipment, which works fine to contact dispatch. And I just want to let you know that the survey that you had asked for me to prepare to be included with the census. The survey is ready and I have to send a document to Michelle tomorrow. That'll be the paper copy with the Q R code that people can use their phone to just take a picture of and fill out the survey online.
Good.
And paper copy for those that don't want to do it with the computer.
Thank you very much for doing that.
No problem.
Okay. Jason, new business?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, under old business, I'm not going to go over all the ones that we normally go over. I think we can remove the Assistant C A O position because we took care of that tonight.
Yada, yada.
Yada, yada. We can take care of the tip agreement with Wally Computer because that was approved by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So congratulations to them and I think to the town.
Through that meeting. That was a good one.
That's a win-win. I I think I mentioned that Carl and I met with the group that wanted to take over the seventy-four College Highway facility, so we had some informal discussions with them.
But at some point, there'd be an agreement coming, but there's nothing, there's nothing in a paper form. So that still needs to come to us so it can come to the board.
Right, but I thought it was a very positive meeting.
Very educational meeting.
Very, right, very educational. The the people that are attempting to take over know the industry are very serious about it. They've done a lot of research, very impressive, so. If 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 we're going to have a facility, those are the kind of people you want running it. So with that, old business, Mr. Mowgli.
I've said enough already.
Mr. Peron, old business.
I'm going to say none at this time, sir.
Okay, then I am going to end by wishing everyone a happy and safe holidays, merry Christmas, merry Christmas, and I need a motion to adjourn.
And this concludes another year. Happy New Year, sir.
Happy New Year.
Peron, Mr. Steinhardt. Thank you.
Same to all of you.
Dean, you made it through your first year already. How about that? Ten minutes. So and to everyone, you know, happy, have a happy and safe, most importantly, and healthy new year. Okay, motion.
I'll try and get healthy.
All right.
Get there, will you?
Jason, do a second, please.
I will second that motion, sir.
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mowgli, I.
And Jason Peron, I.
All right, good night. Get better, Jason.